Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting for the Westerville City Schools District. And I would like to ask the Treasurer to please call the roll.
Mrs. Crowe? Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, thank you, I'm here. Would you please stand with us to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on down the agenda, I'm going to ask the Board if we can move an item on the agenda. And the reason I'm doing that is to bring the Personnel Consent Calendar forward, which is item nine on your agenda. I am asking the Board, or I will ask the Board, to move that item forward so that some people who are here can leave. Could I have a motion to amend the agenda to move item nine up?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, would you call the roll on amending the agenda?
Congratulations.
We're working with new technology here.
Okay. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The agenda has been amended. And with that, I would like to bring the Personnel Consent Calendar forward. Could I have a motion on that, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. Dr. Callog, you want to discuss it?
This evening, Mr. Chakowski here to present the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Callog, President, Mr. Baker, members of the Board. Before you this evening is our bi-monthly consent calendar. We've had some time, I've had some conversation with you about a couple items, and I think I've been able to answer all the questions, so it's my recommendation that you do approve. But I do want to point out a couple of highlights we do, and part of the reason we brought this forward is under our employment, we are thrilled to have a new Assistant Principal joining us from, for Westerville North High School. It's Mr. Scott Gaddis. Scott comes to us from Grove City High School as a math teacher, and he's done some internships. So as we get past the process, I would like to have him stand, so you can be introduced to him publicly. So it's my recommendation that you accept the consent agenda as is presented to you this evening.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Would you call the roll, please, Laura?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the consent calendar has been approved.
Well, thank you, and I would like, Mr. Gaddis, if you could stand up, and I'll let you introduce your lovely family that you brought with us today. It's costing them a lot of money to bribe his children with probably ice cream, or a Happy Meal, or something of the sort, so. Scott, welcome.
Happy Gaddis, our son Simon. Happy Korean.
Scott, we welcome you to our district. Just to note, Scott's going to be taking the place of Lee Coburn, who will be leaving at the end of this month, and will be filling that position with an interim person for the remainder of the school. He has two months to remain from an operational standpoint. But Scott will be on board officially with the 14-15 contract year for our administrators, but the man is a worker, and I'm sure he's going to be very involved prior to that. So thank you for your approval.
Great. And thank you for being with us, Scott. We appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Great.
Moving on then, back to the agenda as written.
Can I interrupt one quick?
Of course.
I just thought we might want to back up to the retirement piece.
Sure.
There is a school counselor, Jennifer Fohnkamp is retiring as well, and it might be worth noting her service to the district as well.
That's a good idea.
So I didn't want us to miss that one. I know we switched things up. So behalf of the district, we want to thank her for her service and wish her well in retirement as well.
Yes, we do. Springtime, and really, it is getting to be spring, is always difficult in some ways because we do have retirements that come along, and it's always difficult to say goodbye to some people who have given so much to the kids of this district and the families of this district.
That's a great point, but also a reminder, we'll have that board meeting in the spring here, where we'll recognize all of those, invite all those retirees that maybe have left, like Ms. Coburn is here before the end of the school year.
Right.
Some of those. But you're right, we'll see a bunch of folks here in the next two months, so.
Thank you, Kurt. Now, the board meeting minutes. This is to discuss and approve the minutes of the January 24th board meeting. And we are not taking motions and seconds on this, we are doing this by consensus. And are there any corrections, changes, or discussion you wish to have for those minutes? I hear none. The minutes are approved as written. Moving on to district highlights and recognitions. On the agenda this evening, we have a couple of exciting resolutions that we're going to read. We're going to recognize Mason Miller, and we're going to recognize Leila Barnes. And I'd like to ask the Board to please step to the front.
Yes. Chris Davidson will be reading the resolutions this evening because Tracy is the engagement liaison for board.
We'll ask Mason Miller. Okay, I'll read while you're shaking hands if you want to do that. Whereas, I'm sorry, resolution for the commendation for Mason Miller. Whereas, in 2013, Westerville North School sophomore Mason Miller, coached by Jeff Regler, won the 100, I'm so sorry, won the 50-yard freestyle in 20.87 seconds at the Division One State Swimming and Diving Meet and placed second in the 100 Free. And whereas, Miller continued to excel as a competitive swimmer in 2014, becoming the school's record holder in the 100 Free and 100 Butterfly, and in the 2014 Central District Champion in those same events. And whereas, Miller, the Warriors' only state qualifier, tested in his versatility at the 200, I'm sorry, at the 2014 State Meet held on February 22nd at Brannan Nautatorium in Canton, Ohio. And whereas, Miller rolled to dominate victory in the 100 Yard Butterfly with a time of 48.32 and finished third in the 100 Freestyle 20 minutes later with a time of 45.51. Therefore, be it resolved that Westerville City Board of Education and Superintendent command Mason Miller for those remarkable accomplishments, thank him for bringing honor and distinction to our district community, and wish him continued success in all future endeavors. Thank you.
Awesome.
Whereas, in 2013, Westerville North sophomore Mason Miller, coached by Jeff Regler, won the 50-yard freestyle in 20.87 seconds in the Division One State Swimming and Diving Meet and placed second in the 100 Free. And whereas, Miller continued to excel as a competitive swimmer in 2014, becoming the school's record holder in 100 Free and 100 Butterfly, and in the 2014 Central District Champion in those same events. And whereas, Miller, the Warriors' only state qualifier, tested his versatility in the 2014 State Meet held on February 22nd at Brannan Nautatorium in Canton, Ohio. And whereas, Miller rolled to dominate victory in the 100 Yard Butterfly with a time of 48.32 and finished third in the 100 Freestyle 20 minutes later with a time of 45.51. Therefore, be it resolved that the Westerville City Board of Education and the Superintendent command Jeff Regler, Coach Jeff Regler, for guiding Mason Miller to excel once again at the statewide level, congratulate him on yet another remarkable accomplishment in his coaching career, thank him for bringing honor and distinction to our district and community, and thank him for his continued success. I'm sorry, this is all new to me, and I'm learning on the fly. So the resolution of commendation for Westerville North High School, approved by the Board of Education, is going to go to Principal Yancey. Okay, and next, we'd like to welcome Leila Barnes. Certificate of commendation from the Board of Education and Superintendent to Leila Barnes, Westerville North High School, 2014 Outstanding Young Woman in Central Ohio Zonta Club of Columbus. Chosen on the basis of scholastic achievement, leadership, and commitment to the service within the community and school, we congratulate you for this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you for bringing honor and distinction to our district, and wish you continued success in all future endeavors. Could everyone's friends and families of the Mason family and Barnes, Leila Barnes, stand up and recognize them, please?
Congratulations.
All right, we'll move on in the agenda to the first portion of public comment. The first portion of public comment is reserved for comments for items that are on the agenda for action the evening of the board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes, but no one has signed up, so I'm not going to talk about it any further. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, Robert's Rules of Order. And this is a motion to suspend Robert's Rules of Order for Agenda Items 7.01 through 7.03. And this is a motion to allow us to talk freely about the topics that are going to be under discussion this evening. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, would you call the roll, please, Laura?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, Robert's Rules have been suspended just for Item 7 on the agenda. Now turn this over to Superintendent now.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. For part of the work session this evening, I wanted to hit on a couple pieces related to secondary program and elementary programming moving forward, and the implications for staffing. Of course, some of this ties into magnet schools and some of the work we're doing in our Straight A Fund. In order to do this with a full context, I want to examine this from the lens of, as it shows, examining opportunities to improve K-12 services and programs, and kind of paint a bigger broad-stroke picture, and then we'll dive into some particulars tonight. So not everything I'm going to hit on here are things we're going to talk about tonight, but are things that we have talked about and will continue to talk about in terms of how to improve opportunities for kids and services to families. Before I do that, I want to frame this around the big picture of financial considerations. And part of what was embedded back in a resolution by the Board, I believe it was April of 2012, around financial conditions and moving forward with bringing programs back and adding programs around our financial picture. And so around this whole notion of improved financial conditions, I want to point to a couple of things that I think are good news about why we're at, but also want to put a heads up about looking forward and being careful as we make progress about where we could be. So in that, under improved financial conditions, I want to point out, I'm a broken record on this one, but we are in good stead in our five-year forecast, as Mr. Griffiths pointed out. I want to share that if you look at our five-year forecast, you'll notice that revenues, the money coming in the door, exceed expenditures through FY '17. So money coming in the door is more than money going out the door through FY '17. We also have behind that a healthy cash balance and reserve. As you know, the previous Board had enacted and put into five-year forecast a $13 million budget reserve item that really represents one month of operating cash, and that's just good budgeting. Behind that also are carryover dollars that are kind of supplement our total five-year forecast, and so those are there well, too. So we're in good stead there through '17. One of the pieces we've talked about before is this emergency levy that was passed in March of 2012, I think I got my dates right, and the impact on our five-year forecast, and the promise made to the community about how long we would, the length of that emergency levy and what it would do. And in fact, because of improved performance and improved revenues, both from the state and locally, we are pointing out that that emergency levy is going to extend beyond the promised point and actually take it right to its endpoint, which is a point at which we either make a decision to renew that levy or let it fall off. And that's that FY '17 dollars. And that's kind of the future point I want to point to as a cautionary piece in this whole big picture. Because in FY '17, that's the final year where expenditures exceed, excuse me, where revenues exceed expenditures. Then it flips, and expenditures, money going out the door, exceed revenue, even with the assumption of a levy renewal. If you look at those numbers, you'll see that even if you pass the levy in FY '18, you'll collect 8.3 million, but you'll still be in the hole revenues to expenditures moving forward. Then you'll be dipping into that cash reserve we pointed to in the five-year forecast to move forward. So you go into the piggy bank to keep yourself moving forward because your expenditures and revenues aren't lined up after FY '17, even with the renewal. The following year, because that's half a year of collection in '18, 8.3, the following year in FY '19, you have full collection, which is a 16-plus. Even with that, the question becomes number five there. There's no question in my mind, there's going to be need after, even with the levy renewal, even with the assumption of a levy renewal, that the district will have to go back to the public and look for new money past the renewal. The question is when, and what year, and how much? And those are two variables that we're trying to manage past all that. So FY '17 renewal time, what happens there? And then past FY '17, when's the next new money, how big, and when does it come? That's kind of the big picture in this whole thing, and it's too hard to project out to what that might look like at this point. But as we all know from our own budgets, the more you manage now, the better off you are in the long term. So that's what we're kind of looking at. So under this idea that we've improved financial conditions, we know that there's opportunities here for us, we know there's some things we want to do for boys and girls that makes sense, we just got to wrap around what the financial considerations are. So with that as an overview, I want to kind of walk through a punch list of some of the programming decisions we've been talking about, and then we'll dive down into specific ones today. Some of these have been conceptual conversations, and I'll give you an update on what we're talking about. Under the all-day, everyday kindergarten classes, that would fit under the what and why around school readiness, literacy, and early intervention. All part of strategic planning is things the community would like to see. We know we have space, which is rare for a central Ohio school district for all-day, everyday kindergarten. It's a matter of staffing and programming pieces, and we're in the process, Dr. Callahan is working with a group that are going to examine our communities, our parents' wish for all-day, everyday kindergarten, what might be the parameters around which that would be a value add to the district. So questions about sliding scale on cost, if it's not at your school, if it's at a center, all those pieces, we're going to collect that data this spring and start to look at. I would say, standing here today in March, I think we'd be hard-pressed to do any all-day, everyday kindergarten for next year, but I'd like to keep that one in front of us for the future. The other one we have talked about is review of three through eight gifted services. I've talked before about that. That ties back to the state accountability measures, that's the C on our report card. It's not a bad C, but anytime we have a C, we want to see if we can do better. And we're going to work at putting a team together, start looking at three, eight gifted services, put that team together this spring with commission to work through the fall, and bring us back a report in early fall so that whatever considerations might be tied to, we have an understanding that around financial implications next fall. So that's the work we're going to start doing. 21st Century Teaching and Learning Roadmap, you've already seen, you've given us approval to keep moving forward, and we're in implementation at this point. We've talked about the budgeting of that one. So those are three things, punch list things. Couple others. One that we have not talked about, but I will bring back to the Board in, after the spring break sometime in April, is transportation. Under the resolution that went on in April 2012, one of the things that was said was one of the priority items would be what kind of, how could we improve transportation services? And there's three things I'd like us to remember. One is the impact of changing in walking distances that affected families as part of the scale back, and I've started to look at that. I think there's some information that'll be worthwhile for you in the future, and I extended invitation to you to take a visit to the Transportation Office. I hope you do that because Bob will do a good job showing you around what's going on. The second one is the walking distance to the bus stop. We're at a half mile, what would it be to scale that back? Remember this winter? I do, I have the email saved. The third one is, and this is the one that I think might be a blind spot for us, is what happened to transportation services that relates to athletic and extracurricular activities? And our scale back there, and the dollars put back on schools that we need to take a look at. So I anticipate bringing that back to you for more conversation in the future about how we can improve that service. One of the things I want you to keep in mind, when we think of students and access to school, and those kids who most need to be at school, consider transportation services and the impact it might have on students, particularly when you have a bad winter like we had, and how that relates to school readiness and being at school period, and looking at attendance. And that's actually one of the things I'm doing, is pulling the attendance for schools, looking at attendance rates of subgroups, and trying that, taking a look at the habits might be impacted by transportation services. Tonight, the two we're going to focus on, and Mr. Reeves is here with me this evening, we're going to focus on secondary programs and staff, and take a look at some of the work that's going on there, and the staffing implications, and the program opportunities for kids. And then I'll come back to the podium and talk to you some more about the elementary piece, elementary facilities, elementary magnets, where we're going to be there. So before I do that, I want to thank Scott Reeves and his team, I'm sure he'll point them out today. This has been Fast and Furious. I'll tell you right now that there are pieces that, as every day unravels, changes. There are bumpy spots in this because this is a change in perspective, this is a new model. We're trying to partner with businesses and industries in the community, as well as with colleges, to create robust opportunities for kids in a short timeframe. And I can tell you right now, K-12 people, higher ed people, and business people don't all see things and work the same way. And then when you start putting dollars in, it really gets messy. So I know Scott's done a lot of work there, and I'm interested, and you'll be, I think it'll be exciting to see what he's got for you. So I'm going to turn over to Scott, and then I'll be back at the podium to hit on the elementary magnets.
Yeah, the arrow. There you go.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. I want to share really our progress and our update and our ongoing collaboration with Central Ohio School Districts, 16 to this point, Columbus State Community College, and regional business partners as a part of our ongoing Central Ohio Pathways to Prosperity Network. If you recall, back in December, we received $14.4 million from the state's Straight A Grant Fund to support Central Ohio's efforts in connecting to the National Pathways to Prosperity Network. The national network is supported by the Higher Graduate School of Education and Jobs for the Future. Our local partners include Columbus State, Batel for Kids, the Educational Services Central Ohio, among others. So once we received that grant, our next step was determine how to achieve the goals of that grant as it was proposed to the Ohio Department of Education. Those decisions are being made by steering committee members who are representatives from each of our school districts and Columbus State, and I'm our district's steering committee member. So the steering committee has selected six projects aligned to four industry sectors: computer-assisted manufacturing and robotics, health technology, information technology, and business logistics. Our district will be participating in three of those, that's advanced manufacturing, health, and business logistics pathway. Our plan aligns with a larger regional strategy, supported by the goal of 60% of Central Ohio adults earning a post-secondary certificate or college degree by 2025. Currently, in Ohio, only about 33% to 36% of our adults have anything more than a high school diploma. This goal was adopted by school districts and higher education partners throughout Central Ohio as a part of the Central Ohio Compact in response to Columbus 2020's Regional Economic Development Plan. The strategy includes improving high school graduation rates, reducing the need for college remediation, providing students with opportunities to earn marketable certificates in the workforce. And so at any point, you can see all the data points you'd like, if you were to Google the Central Ohio Compact or Columbus 2020, all of our regionals data is held there. So these programs are designed to expose students to a wide range of careers within each of those targeted industry sectors. Each includes college coursework, career pathway certification coursework, and professional experiences that will help our students compete for the best post-secondary opportunities and market-driven employment. And so what I'm going to share with you in a moment is a demonstration of our district's ongoing commitment to meet the regional strategies, to ensure that our graduates are competitive and marketable, and kind of the phrase that is being tossed around among the various districts as we are preparing the innovation generation, which I contend all of our generations in our country have been, but that's the one that sticks for them. So one of the things that I will share is kind of a concept design of what secondary education is evolving to become in a variety of districts, as well as this one. What we didn't want to do is just receive these grants and look at these programs and just kind of hodgepodge these programs with no rhyme or reason. It was an opportunity that, as we knew the conversation, to bolster middle school programming and make more focus what we do at the high school level, to make it seamless, a part of a systematic experience that our students will have in grades six through 12. And so kind of what you see on the concept map, the box at the bottom is banded out by grades, and I will share with you in a little while the experience of what a sixth grader, seventh grader, and eighth grader's day would look like. But college and career writing, our students at the sixth grade is a great opportunity to expose them to a wide variety of careers, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. Our advanced manufacturing, one of the pathways that we are involved in, is geared right now for the middle and high school levels, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. The health science career exploration, or a wellness course in the eighth grade, and obviously, the visual and performing arts is always a pathway that our students can choose, along with the college prep traditional pathway. And you can see how that then builds, and as we have it designed right now, the health sciences pathway will be housed primarily at Central High School. The reason for that is because that was the place that housed STEM bodies before. So from the training and the equipment that was there from the STEM bodies, and very similar Project Lead the Way curriculum that those teachers were trained on, that made a natural segue for that health pathway. Business courses and logistics at this point will be housed at South High School, and we really, really liked how that integrated with the IB program there. And as we take the advanced manufacturing in the middle school grades and segue those cohorts up, we will bridge into the engineering program that will flow through Westerville North High School. And then all of the, all of the high schools obviously have our college prep curriculum that students have the option to take with non-pathway, for lack of a better word, IB coursework, AP coursework, college prep, career technical. We are aligned with Columbus and Delaware Community College, and so all of those pathways and experiences, so that when our students graduate from high school, they don't only have a diploma, that they have a plan, they have been exposed to a variety of options for them. And I think that really hits home, a couple of weeks ago, there was a Dispatch article that said that, it talked about students changing majors, and it said that every time a student changes majors, not only is it more expensive, but it raises the likelihood that they won't graduate from college. And they listed, I think, 20 schools and their four-year graduation rate, and there was only one public university on that list, and that was Ohio State, at 53%. Only 53% of Ohio State's graduates have graduated from there in four years. And we have a load of public universities that our kids go to. And so to have students go through and matriculate and not have a degree, or not have a professional certificate, is really putting them at a disadvantage in our state economically. So this is how we'll look to solve that. It's been more difficult, I will say, at the high school level in designing the pathways, number one, because we are doing this with a lot of other school districts, and that's a new design. Most school districts design their curriculum and experience singularly within what their board or their community wants. And we're And we're trying to merge a, a variety of districts around Central Ohio to work together and to partner in these pathways, but also working with Columbus State, who was one of the grant partners, because their policies, their hurdles, their course requirements, their prerequisites don't seamlessly align with K-12. And that's a new model that we are working and building through. So I would say that the high school pathways are still rapidly being designed. In fact, our health team is meeting tomorrow morning to continue the program design. So, I will share with you now as we matriculate, let me go back. If you see on the, the arrows on the side, obviously, beginning in the sixth grade, and I think Dr. Kellogg dubbed it the aspiration map, but really, it's an, it's a portfolio, an electronic portfolio, portfolio that students can begin to design and collect their experiences as they matriculate from sixth grade and a broad introduction to a variety of careers, finding their voice and their pathway to what they're good at, what they like and how that connects to industry and builds towards projects that they work towards that could involve capstone projects, research projects upon graduation. So, that's what we're hoping to design and implement for our, for our middle school students. So that's what the, the side. So when you look at the typical day of a sixth grade student, moving forward for next year, we're, we're not tinkering with the schedule. We're still going to maintain a, a seven-period day. And if you recall back in the, in the spring of last year, this board awarded four and a half FTE to provide a technical writing course. Number one, to provide the needed skills for the, that grade level, but number two, provide more programming options for the sixth grade after our cuts. What we have really felt strongly about was that was an opportunity for us to design a, a course that, that incorporates the writing, but also incorporates the exploration into careers. Currently, this, the Ohio Department of Ed uses the OCIS system or Ohio Career Information System. They are transferring that system and developing something called Career Connections. If you were to go to the Ohio Department of Ed website and put Career Connections in there, you can see that there, there is elementary curriculum, middle school curriculum, high school curriculum to introduce our students to the broad array of industries that are available to them. And we think right there at that level is an appropriate place to begin that process for our students. So, when you say, when, when you see A-Day and B-Day, that's because a lot of our electives are semester, but instead of semesterizing them and moving forward, we do every other day all year. So one day they'll take one semester course, the next day they'll take the B-Day, the other semester course. So, just in general, their first four periods of the day could be their core courses, lunch and advisory, and then our sixth graders take PE for a semester and then the evolving of the tech writing to be college and career writing. And we are meeting actually Wednesday with those teachers to begin the design of that course. And we have to this point met with the high school science teachers, the high school business teachers, the high school counselors are meeting with principals weekly as we are involving staff, building level, in helping to design. Because we can come up with all kinds of concepts, but they have to implement it and make it sustainable and make it work for our kids. So, they absolutely need to be a part of this. So that's what, not really different than what it looks now, just the evolution of that course, which is why it's in red. The seventh grade was the grade that probably was the grade that had the least amount of options. And so, as we are infusing the advanced manufacturing, the gateway to Project Lead the Way, what comes with this are a semester advanced manufacturing course. This will be a separate and standalone semester course that we anticipate coming back before the board in a couple of weeks with staffing to support this model for our students. The coursework or the, the licensure for teachers teaching that would be math or science at the middle school level, so that affirms our commitment that has taken a national hold, state hold and a local hold of providing more STEM education for our students to make them more marketable students. So, when you look, therefore, pathways and then lunch and advisory, and currently, we have nothing really to pair off of art. And that's where you have the, the situation where you have a, a boatload of seventh graders every other day taking multiple study halls. This would fill a very purposeful hole in that void. And then obviously, we have students that opt to take band, orchestra and choir in the visual and performing arts pathways. That comes with the advanced manufacturing and it's very difficult to find a good solid picture, as proposed in this grant, is what is called an MIT Mobile Fab Lab. And Fab doesn't stand for fabulous, although it is fabulous, it stands for fabrication. And it is a, it is a quarter of a million plus engineering trailer that is customized and designed with, with industry quality equipment where kids in the advanced manufacturing coursework have projects that are off of that curriculum and they are in the mobile Fab Lab to actually have, take an idea from concept to drawing to design to actual manifestation. It is mobile, so we will be able to, to actually move the Fab Lab from each, to each of our middle schools. So we'll just have to logistically schedule when each school does their projects. And that, we are really, really excited about that, about that process. So, that's what we're looking at for the seventh grade. And then the eighth grade had the majority of courses to choose from already when you have high school level Spanish, band, choir, orchestra. And so what we have done in eighth grade as a result of our cuts is we moved the high school PE1 down into the eighth grade. And what we are really looking to evolve that into becoming, because what we have ignored is the wellness piece of a very critical time of life for students. I have an eighth grade son and I live it every day. And so, transferring that into, from PE1 to a health wellness course that also is an introductory course to many modules that could be provided in the health pathway. Because we want our students exposed to the variety of choices that they may have, but given authentic experiences in advanced manufacturing, given a realistic introductory overview of what is in the health pathway so that when they go to high school, they can make a more informed choice. What I neglected to mention earlier when we looked at our concept map, also within the, those grants are opportunities for us to build within our high schools, distance learning labs, so that students at North can access curriculum at South or curriculum at Central through those distance learning labs, so that it's not germane to you have to go to this school for this, or you have to go to this school to, to enter into that pathway. Through technology, we're able to bridge horizontally so all of our students can access all of those pathways. And we're still designing what that looks like. So, evolving that then pushes PE1 completely back into the high school and/or summer school and, and could provide a, a situation where we may at some point in the near future come to the board to consider what is allowable for you in offering a PE waiver for students who participate in band athletics and cheerleading to waive the PE requirement in lieu of half a credit of something else as a result of that participation. So that is something that you may be asked to consider down, down the road as well. And so, when you look at that, there, there are a variety of choices that an eighth grader would have and experiences that they would have as they matriculate up through into high school and really have a very purposeful experience through our secondary system.
The seventh grade study hall. Well, you know, you had that as one semester that there is that study hall slot. Are students going to be able to schedule for that? In other words, can they take two musics? Are we going to allow that? Or are we going to require that study hall slot?
I would say depending on the scheduling, my philosophy is always that there's room and a willing student. We want a behind in the seat learning something.
Yeah.
And so, logistically, it's, it's, we're juggling a lot of balls in the air because almost all of our, our teachers, band teachers, orchestra teachers aren't static in one building. They're rotating around to get all of our students covered. So if it is coverable and a student wishes to take that, then we'll try to make that happen. It really just depends on the logistics of when a teacher is where.
Questions for Scott? Things you want to talk about?
Is there a set percentage that we get to participate in when we're talking about a variety of districts with, with some of these classes?
I, I would say, much in the same approach that we are with the, the teaching and learning roadmap, is that we're probably going to start at the high school level with a smaller cohort. So that way your mistakes aren't magnified and identifying students as they enter into these pathways, quite often from, from their own identified interests of what they want to do. But as we build from the middle school up, a larger exposure to these pathways, we anticipate the coursework and the opportunities for kids to be as wide as, as we can, we can handle and we can hold. So, we have not discussed the ceiling. We hope to get to the point where we have to discuss the ceiling. And I would say that these pathways are specific to the grant. There are other things that we are looking at in other industries. We are looking to expose our students and experiences to have so that there is a really, a breadth of, of opportunities for our kids.
And at the same time, they're aware that they can go on to the vocational school and high school and do, you know, in-depth.
And the premise of, of this, this whole grant and, that the vocational schools are wonderful, and if you look at the data, one in five kids in our state goes to a vocational school and the graduation rate for kids who do is 98%. That's 8% better than our own graduation rate, eight, seven, eight percent that we're constantly working on improving. And 60% of those kids go on to higher ed. The problem is with the stigma that still exists with vocational education, with the kids not wanting to leave their campus. So, we have 45, give or take 100, high school kids, 2,300 available who could go to vocational ed in 11th to 12th grade. We have about 120 kids that go.
Yeah.
So for our economic needs in our state, we're not touching enough kids through that method. It's a wonderful, viable method, but we've got to touch kids on our campus as well and give them some of those experiences.
Scott, within this model, if my student gets into one of these pathways and into the high school, post-high school, am I triggered towards straight to the workforce or are there, are there more options? What does that look like?
That, that is certainly an option for you. So, for example, when you look at one of the, the professional certifications in the health pathway, Farm Tech or EKG or a certificate like that, not only does a student upon graduation and some of those tests because of legal requirements, they can't take until they're 18 or they're out of high school, but they would have met those requirements, but a lot of those kids would be halfway to an associate's degree through, through those experiences in high school. So, not only can they continue and are more likely to continue their post-secondary education, which a lot of places like Columbus State have two plus two agreements with places like Miami and Ohio State, but they also have a very marketable skill that can make them employable right now, so that they have a choice to be employable in good-paying jobs that are needed. When we talk to people from Columbus or Ohio Health and Children's, they talked about the need in some of those areas that we're servicing that they just can't find. They said for everyone we have, we need five. And so, we are really providing an economic need for our region and a marketable need for our students at the same time.
And regarding distance learning, you mentioned that. Are you considering, I'm sure you've discussed with other districts and Columbus State or wherever, that they do have some districts learning labs in Columbus Public, for example. I know that. So, there, but is there any way that you're, have you looked into the opportunities to, to use those teachers to teach our kids? I mean, you know, when you're doing distance learning, you can, you know, do lots of classes at once.
Absolutely. And, and the distance learning lab is built into all the proposals. So, for example, we have 10 partners in our health pathway proposal, Columbus City being one of them. There, there's a distance learning lab being built in. Now, when I say, I don't know that hurdle is the right word, but as we are working towards a new model of working together, how we do that and have students in here in, in Westerville and students in Manhattan, students in New Albany with a singular teacher at a remote site, how that actually plays out and looks and is, is done and transcribed and all of those things is what we are working through, but that is the model.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. A lot to chew on. And I just bring out a few things. I love the partnerships that you're emphasizing. Not only districts, but businesses, other schools. Love that. I love that we are being aggressive, trying to get Straight A grants, all of these funds that are out there. I'm very pleased and I, I really, I'd just like dive into it and chew it up, but I, but I love that we're trying to emphasize, you've, you're calling them pathways, lenses, emphasis, whatever it is, however, we can strengthen a student's particular leaning. I think that's awesome. It, it sounds like, and it, it sounds like, like we're, we're trying to line up this middle school thing to line up with the high school thing, to line up with the college thing so that...
Lines up with the economic.
Lines up with the economic thing. So, so they go technical school and after that can get a job. And, and I think you're saying, yeah, I mean, we can provide the same thing here. If you come out of this and you don't want to go on to college to, you are, you are beginning to be career-ready. And I mean, you all read the newspapers as well as I do. People are saying at least, they're saying all the time, you are not educating what we need. And it sounds like to me, Scott and John, all, I mean, it sounds like you all are really working awfully hard to line up this thing so that, so that what they study not only feeds their passion, which is huge to me, but it feeds their passion and it says, you know, in your passion, here are 10 different things you could do. And I, I, I just, I wrote the word pathways a number of times. I love the MIT Fab Lab. I just, I mean, I just, that, that just sounds awesome. And the last piece, and I'm quiet here. You know, I'm, I'm thinking, you're going through this, okay, if you don't live in Centrals, but you want to do Norths. And, and I thought, I, I know they got this technical thing and it, awesome. Awesome.
Well, we're, we're working very hard and, and, I mean, we have a great team, many of whom are, are sitting behind me tonight, that are working equally as hard to make this a reality for our kids.
Yeah. And it's just, and I know, you know, just, we're just like diving into this, it's, it's a bit of a labyrinth, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's the good term.
Yeah.
And, and trying to figure out all the pieces, parts, how they work together. But, I love when we are trying to provide for children a pathway for, for which they are passionate. And, I just think that's awesome.
Did you say what the timeline or for implementation would be?
The answer is no, he did not. And we're like pushing him.
I will say that the timeline is, is incredibly aggressive and we are probably, and that's why it's taken a great deal of our energies and, and time because we're trying to do in a couple of months, really what you should do in a year or so. With that being said, and you understand the model, when we allocate general fund dollars, they need to be spent within that fiscal year. Well, that's no different than we have been allocated monies from the state that is a part of their fund dollars that need to be spent within this fiscal year. So, the money for the grant, which is mostly for stuff, equipment, technology, training, not for staffing, must be encumbered by the end of this school year and spent by September. So, we, we are on a very rapid pace. Now, full implementation through the pathways, we have, I think, the ability to build small, slow, steady, build a good foundation and build cohorts up through so that this thing is sustainable and systematic.
But you'll start at the high school level and then trickle down? No, you're going to start all at the same...
I would say the most impacted, the quickest will be the middle school. The middle school, we hope to get the teachers either selected and/or hired and trained this summer, not only in Project Lead the Way coursework, but on how to operate the mobile Fab Lab equipment and begin implementing that next year. We are also right now looking at different curricular options and are lining up meetings with PE teachers at the middle school level to begin that evolution piece. So, no, we're, we're ready to start building those cohorts now at the middle school. The high school will be one that will start smaller.
Okay. So, two more questions. Tell me what can be created in the mobile Fab Lab?
Reynoldsburg High School has what they call a static Fab Lab. That means one in-house in the building. It's partnered with Batel. That's what we hope to, to have in the coming years at Westerville North High School. And I'll give you something that I saw them create that, that saved money and involved a lot of different departments. They had the ability to design a computer table. They needed one. And when they looked at buying a new kind of computer table that could seat 10 or 12 kids, it was a thousand bucks plus that they didn't have, but they designed one and they took one from the graphic arts. They designed it on paper. They put it into a computer model and design. They were able to then implement that into a 3D printer and actually make a real-life prototype. prototype that they actually conceptualized and built and realized it wasn't stable. And then in came the physics department that said, it was a whole nother physics lesson that said, "Looking at the weights here, looking at the balance here, here, you need a cable here, and you need a cable here," and it was as sturdy as a rock and better than the one that they bought. And so, they get companies, much like our hydroponics gets restaurants that buys basil, they get companies that come to them to design and implement projects for them. So, it's pretty exciting. And it'll be, it'll be grade level-specific, and we'll become more specific. And Reynoldsburg has chosen to include their robotics, which was a club, like ours is a club. Well, that curriculum is now in, a part of that. So, and they've taken it and really run with it, and I think that's what's the exciting, it's the limits of what your imaginations of your teachers and kids can do.
Great. So, one more. So, what if my homeschool doesn't offer what I want to take? What if I want to go to Central for health and wellness? How would I do that?
We already have models within our district where we have students that go, our home students at one high school and take a course, like AP Physics at North, a Central student will go there. We have that now. We have money built into our grant for transportation proposals, because we don't want a student's inability to travel from one high school to the next to be a barrier for this pathway. And so, that's one of the items that we are very cognizant of and are still working on logistically, how we could make sure that that happens.
So, are you saying they would stay at their homeschool and travel for a course, or just open-enroll type?
We've entertained both possibilities.
Oh, okay.
We've not landed on what it'll look like, but both of those possibilities have been discussed.
Okay.
This is really exciting stuff. I do want to keep in mind that as we talk about the pathways, and we talk about all those fantastic changes that are coming and that, you know, we've needed to do for some time, I don't want to lose sight that this is part of a much broader umbrella that we're looking at for our kids at all levels, but particularly as we look at the secondary level. And what we're talking about is really increasing the level of options, the number of options that are open to our kids, whether that is IB, whether it's AP, whether it's one of the pathway programs, whether it's some sort of conglomeration of those, and how that would work, who knows? But it's exciting to consider, because we are opening doors and windows that have been painted shut for a really long time. So, I'm very, very happy to hear it, and also very happy to hear that as you're looking at this, we're not, we're not planning to sacrifice other programs, and we're not planning to diminish the likelihood of enrollment in other programs and other courses, because obviously these pathways are not for everyone, although there's a great deal that I think will transfer to everyone. But we're, you know, we're going to maintain IB, we're going to maintain support, we're going to maintain and support AP, we're going to maintain and support the arts and all of the humanities.
Absolutely.
So, this is, this is really, really exciting to think about, not just the Fab Lab, which I'm so excited about, but the broader picture of what this means for this district.
And I will tell you, Dr. Kellogg and I have met twice with our Chamber of Commerce, and I think that our local business community shares that excitement.
Good stuff.
One, I forgot, advanced manufacturing, health, wellness, what's the third?
Business logistics.
And if a student begins down a particular path and finds, they're becoming path-adverse, and they want to either shift over or something, I mean, it's all, right? It's all...
That's the great thing about the pathways model. There's always a way on and off the pathway, left or right of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a difference between pathways and tracks.
That's right. Yes, absolutely.
Good stuff.
So, if I was going to point out a couple of quick takeaways from this piece, and thank you, Scott, and his team did a great job, you can tell he's very passionate about this, and he is into it up to his neck in the weeds. Concretely, what you would anticipate seeing unless the bottom falls out is additional programming at middle grades. And so, as Scott referenced, I would anticipate coming back to the board at some point to ask for additional FTE at the middle grades level to support that. And this is not about enrollment increases, it's about a program expansion. So, as we talk about additional FTE, that's where we're going to. So, cool stuff. I'm excited to see what they do with it. The other thing I'd remind you, if you go back to strategic planning, and you're going to hear me do that a lot, right? You're going to see a lot in there where we talk about 21st century students and aspirations and multiple pathways, so that aligns very well with what the community was saying about the kinds of programming they want for kids, 21st century, aligned to real-life skills, all of it's embedded in this, and that's pretty exciting stuff. So, whether or not a kid is excited about the idea of advanced manufacturing, and what you heard him describe, it's a little bit better, a little bit different than what most people might think when they hear manufacturing. Those workplace skill sets are transferable regardless of where the kid lands later on in life in terms of how I work in a team and do these things. So, innovation generation, I kind of like that one. So, that's secondary programming. Any questions for me on this one before I transition over to the elementary piece? Awesome. Thank you. So, let's talk about elementary programming and staffing, and let me walk through some goals that I was going after as we started looking at elementary magnets and the elementary programming. So, four goals. One, it's clear to us as a team that there is real heritage to the magnet program in this district and a desire to recognize that heritage and make it part of what we do, and it's been good for kids. So, goal one is to look at some way to maintain that, and that's been a goal early on for me as superintendent and talking to the team.
Yes.
Can I take that home? I need one that says no for my children. The second one is a goal, is around this managing elementary student enrollment. These two, we've talked about before, how they got co-mingled last spring around the magnet programs and the elementary redistricting. So, for me and for our team, we're in a place now where, as we look at that, we think we can manage this by maintaining this. The other two are important, is, one is staffing disruptions at other schools. And so, you have to keep in mind, when you open four positions at one school, I want you to walk this through with me. If we were open four positions, six positions at one school next year, the internal strife is going to be this. That's going to go internal first. You're going to have internal applicants. So, internal applicants are going to apply for those positions, may win those positions. The ripple effect is back to the other schools, so those six, four to six people might have left. And what those schools then have to do is staff that. And it is not my goal to have a bunch of staffing disruptions as part of trying to make all this thing work. I just don't think that's fair to the system. And the last piece is cost containment. I'm just, it's just one of the things I think we need to maintain as we move forward. So, with those things in mind, here's a solution. And I got pictures that'll go with this better than the words. But here's, conceptually, what we're talking about, where we're going to move. Like to reassign current staff in the magnet each year as grade levels exit. So, currently, and I'll show you this on a roadmap, you have two FTE per grade level for each strand of the three magnet programs. Two at each grade level for world cultures, two for fine arts, and two for math-science. That's in third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And so, that really, in the end of the day, what you'll see is a revised staffing that will allow one FTE per grade level for each strand. So, it's a decrease in the FTE, but it's a maintenance of the program. I'll show you what that looks like. And I'm going to leave Robert Frost out here as a wild card, and I'll kind of show you why, about where that sits. So, after I walk through this, the last thing I'm going to give the board and community is a timeline of what I anticipate happening next as we move forward to make this all happen, so people understand how it looks. But let's take a look at what it might look like. The other thing to keep in mind, when we're talking about staffing, I'm focused on teachers right now, but I pulled a staffing report for Emerson and Hanby as schools. And we all know there's lots of other people working in buildings to support programming that goes on there. And right now, with the third and fourth and fifth grades at Emerson and Hanby and the gifted programs that are there, there are people in these positions, a number of them, tolling 45 different persons. Now, they're not all full-time, but there's 45 different people in these positions between these two schools, and they're assigned there anywhere from .1 to 1.0 of their day. So, when you start increasing or putting buildings together and refilling buildings, it's not just about the staff, it's about these persons too, and costs there as well. So, that impact of increase enrollment across both buildings to this, as well as the teaching staff, okay? So, I just want us to keep that in mind around costs, hitting costs that can sometimes catch you later on, that you weren't paying attention to. What might this look like? This is a diagram that shows you currently staffing patterns for this school year for the three, the four, the three magnet strands at the various buildings. So, here's the fine arts at Hanby. We have two classes in third grade, two in fourth, two in fifth. Hanby math-science has 1, 1, 2 in fifth grade. World cultures at Emerson, 2, 2, 2. Then we have a strand at Robert Frost, one section each in third grade. Okay? The reason I say Robert Frost is a wild card, it's my understanding that was an additional staff added there, that was just staffed as allocated within that. And that's where it gets a little difficult to talk about what a lottery enrollment there would look like to grow that back. So, that's why I call that kind of a wild card for me right now. So, we follow okay on this one? Everybody see where we're at? Okay. So, if, worst-case scenario was, we followed through with the sunsetting that we're at, next year, you would be able to drop a fifth-grade class at math-science for Hanby, because you're only rolling up one class of fourth, so there's one FTE there. And if you rolled out the third grade on the sunset like they've been doing, you'd have two at, for fine arts, one for math-science, two for world culture. So, you have a total of six FTE that if the sunsetting happened, those FTE would have to be re-signed someplace. We're not riffing, they'd have to be re-signed. Okay? Everybody follow the bouncing ball with me so far? So, one way to do this is rather than reassign all six FTE back into the system in other places, right, to fill other needs, whether it's, as we saw before, Mr. Reeves suggested that coming forward, we're going to need to ask for middle grades teachers. We're going to have retirements and replacements where some of these folks could have landed in terms of their reassignments. Rather than reassign all six, we're suggesting that we reduce these, but reassign some of them back into the magnet program in order to maintain it. So, in theory, one model would be reassign some of those, rather than taking all, both out, reduce this to one, reduce this to one, reduce this to one, lift this third, and right there for next year, you'd have third, fourth, and fifth grade in year one. Okay? That's one way to do it. Another concept, if you wanted to grow from the first grade forward, is rather than reassigning them back into third grade, you could do a similar concept, but reassign them back into first grade. This came out because in conversations with a group I was working with, we started here, and then when someone suggested, you know, "We're not sure that parents who have kids in their homeschools now in second grade, we may not have as much interest to come on over, so maybe starting in first grade." That's not for us to answer. We'll put a team together. You'll see that in how I'd like us to get to some other decisions. But conceptually, you could do the same thing and do that. Notice as a current staff member at Robert Frost, that's again, that wild card piece. So, that's another way to do it. So, then you can follow the bouncing ball. That's 14, 15. Conceptually, the following school year, you do the same thing. Here's fourth grade. There's two teachers there and there. If you reduce to one and roll that over, you'd have to hire one here or reallocate from someplace else, reassign from... I hate saying reallocate and reassign when there's names and faces to these, so I apologize for sounding that cold-hearted, but this could be a reassignment of a staff member or additional hire in FY, in the 15, 16 school year, right? And remember, you still have two here, two here. Roll out a third year, reassign, reduce to one, reduce to one, reassign back in. Again, you'd have to hire or reassign here in the third grade, and voila, you have one section at each grade level of each strand in the various programs. So, you go from two sections per grade level for each strand to one section each grade level, each strand. You maintain the program, you have seats allocated, you have staffing to do that. And the Robert Frost piece is down here. Questions about that part, because then I'll go to the timeline piece.
And the other classrooms in the building?
This would occupy about 15 classrooms. It still leaves us some space, and there's other opportunities out there to still talk about. So, let's go back to what I said at the beginning of the big picture, remember? And there are other programming options we've talked about. We've talked about our 3-8 gifted programs. We already have self-contained gifted classrooms here. Is there gifted classroom space needs? Are there gifted program needs for pull-out pieces out of portion of the day? We know we have enrollment problems at the middle schools and some overcrowding. Is there opportunities there to capture? All-day kindergarten is still something we're talking about, so go to your all-day kindergarten model. You have classroom space available in buildings that have kids in them, and all the support staff, and classroom seats available. Now, it's just a matter of finding teaching staff to add some all-day kindergarten programming. So, as we get down the line, we have those opportunities to use those resources and consider as we move along. Okay? So, where I would intend to go at this point is, tonight, I'm giving you a report on the intended direction. From here, starting tomorrow morning, we would put together a team, and this would include parents, community members, staff, principals, district office staff, who would start looking at building a staffing plan. So, the question of, do you start in third grade, do you start in first grade, all those pieces, we put to those folks to kind of come out with what they think is the best way to go. So, a staffing plan around that. I'd like to have, within our administrative guidelines online, an administrative guideline on the lottery system we have in place to support policy 2350. The policy speaks very well to equal access to anybody in the district. What I'd like to have is a set of administrative guidelines in our policy document that people can see. Behind that would be a communication plan to make sure we're pushing out the information to families that are interested, so that everybody understands what access looks like, and then a timeline for making all that happen this spring. And I've said along, my biggest fear about this, and I appreciate the push, is going too fast and messing something up in here for next fall. But I'll commit to that, and we'll lock people up in a room to get this done. And then what I would want is that team to bring me a report, of course, I'd be along their side, April 9th, and come back to the board on April 14th to report on our progress around these things. So, at the end of the day, I'd like to make sure we have guidelines that really speak to, and a communication plan that really speak to what this looks like, how people can get access, how we're going to allocate seats, a staffing plan around third grade, first grade, those questions that I'm sure we all have about where do we start. But let's put, you know, my view, the teachers teaching the program, their commitment level, where their conversation with parents, I think they can better tell us third grade, first grade. Is it the same in both? I don't know. Maybe one of the programs wants to start at third, one starts at first. If that works, that works. Those are details that we let them work on for us and bring forward. And then that communication plan for everybody as well, and then move it along. And there's lots of pieces in here that can be talked about that are also outcomes, some policy questions that I think are interesting for us to wrestle with as well as we move along. So, that would be the timeline. So, what I anticipate doing is, as I said, allocate some of those staff back in the program. At the end of the day, that plan would put one teacher at every grade level for all three strands. We utilize the buildings to whatever this team thinks in terms of utilization of the building. I don't really care if we leave the classrooms that they are at Emerson and Hanby and fill those other ones back in along the way, and see what classroom space is available for other kinds of programming. It puts both buildings online, which is what was going to happen anyway, with support staff, with magnet program, leaves space and resources for other programs and other things we want to do, and gets us to, I think, a better place than we are, than we've been. So, on my side, you know, I want to thank board members in particular. I came with a concept a couple weeks ago. There was some pushback to whether or not that was the best solution. We went back to the drawing board. That push creates some innovation, some creative, I'm not part of the innovation generation, but I think I have good creative minds. I think we have something in place that can get this, get this particular one moving forward. Also appreciate the community's patience with the new guy as we've evolved this over time. If you recall, everything got shelved until the new guy showed up. I had already accepted the job, and then they shelved it. And so, it's been a long learning curve for me, lots of different people providing me opportunities to understand the heritage, the history, the importance, looking at all of our resources, put the whole picture together. The more I scrub this one down and what's proposed here, I think it's a viable solution to move us forward. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Dr. Kellogg, I'd just like to say that we didn't want to take the opportunity away from you as a new kid.
That's a good test.
Yeah, that's right.
Could start something simple.
Yes, and you've done a great job. I appreciate all the work that you've gotten it together here.
Which is bigger than my idea. There's lots of people, and my team has been really good about helping formulate it. And still, there's work to be done here by folks to get at some of this stuff, the nitty-gritty pieces. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
I want you to summarize it. Did you do a good job?
Tracy said she wants me to summarize. Go ahead, sure.
So, I can see some people scratching their head. I thought it was great. I understood it. So, what you're saying is, the programs that are now in Hanby and Emerson will stay there. As those kids move up, the teachers will be, I'm going to use a bad term, but recycled. So, if they can either, they can stay in the building, one will stay, one may have to move on, correct?
For next year, yes.
For next year, yes. And that really would be the only year as long as certifications work out?
Correct.
Okay. Then each year, we will add new cohorts and that school will be able to decide what level they're entered at?
I would say that that planning team will bring forward
Okay.
what the collective group says. And that will have representation from a variety of different people so that we have everybody's input as to what that might look like. But I do think that the people involved in the program are probably better informed about what would be the best way to move that forward rather than me or us telling them, hey, it's gonna be third grade or first grade, so.
Okay, so I'm sorry, did you say who would be in that planning team? I might have missed it.
We'll build that out, I'll work with the two principals at the two magnet schools. I'll work with our internal staff here and we'll start identifying teachers and parents that want to be part of that.
Okay. And then by recycling the teachers, it doesn't cost us any extra dollars, so it will not impact our five-year forecast.
So let's keep this in mind. If worst-case scenario played out and you continue to roll out the magnets, you're gonna, you need to build, the premise has always been you need that building space to manage elementary enrollment. So we needed kids in those buildings. The only way you get a full cost savings out of this is if you shutter both buildings and have no programs in them and put everything back into buildings and through attrition, staff reductions would occur over time because you wouldn't have the need. You wouldn't need all the principals, custodians, all that would be brought back in the system. But because we always knew, the premise has always been, we need that classroom space to support elementary enrollment. So it doesn't cost us new additional teachers in year one. It may in year two and year three cost us one FTE each. It, I might be walking around the question, but the direct answer is for next year, no. We would have no additional staff, no new hires for this.
Okay.
But let me say, let's go back to this. If worst-case scenario was you sunset and you shuttered the building, all of that staff would go back into the system and could be potential cost savings long-term. But I can't see right now the opportunity not, I can't see how we could not have those buildings online with programs in them. It's just a question of, is it a traditional elementary school and then redistricting? Or maintain magnets at some magnitude to help offset the enrollments at other schools?
And then Robert Frost again, so we called that the wild card. Thoughts on that?
So Robert Frost has traditionally been staffed internally. It's, they had, I gotta understand the history a little bit more and that's why part of this team will come together in that the staffing there was additional to allow for students to opt into the program. And we need to take a closer look at that against Robert Frost enrollment size at this point and whether or not, how we might manage to add programming at these other grade levels, first and second in the future. How does that work around our lottery piece for the magnets, which is different than open enrollment? In other words, if we designated a first grade or second grade classroom at Robert Frost as math, science, are we gonna designate that under the lottery?
Yeah.
Or open enrollment? Or do we turn that over to Robert Frost? Let me share an interesting conversation happened, and this is by no means mandate, but just an interesting conversation that happened. So we were talking about the professional development associated with the math, science here, right? And the question became, how do we give this the support it needs in math, science piece? And so we got to talking about STEM. So here is conceptually, really, math, science could conceptually be STEM design, as could this, as could Charrington, which is interested in STEM, as to a number of other buildings. So why don't we consolidate the professional development for elementary schools around STEM? And those buildings that are interested in that kind of professional development, the professional development for teachers is similar. The provider is similar, the training is similar, the implementation, the building might be different. Robert Frost, in theory, could say, we're gonna run a STEM strand through here with our own staff, with our own kids. And the professional development that staff is getting the work they're doing would piggyback upon what the magnet teachers are doing at Handby, which also could include the teachers at Charrington who are interested in doing STEM. And if there's another building that's interested in doing a Robert Frost kind of strand or a whole building model, as that building, we've talked about this, as that building and its community and its teachers and its parents decide that that's the one they do. Same concept holds for the fine arts or the world cultures. These are program opportunities, we've always talked about how the magnets could be supportive of the other thing. That's how, that's one way to do it. They're not necessarily the central focus of it, but the district recognizes those as professional development opportunities and we capitalize on that for any building that wants to commit to that model. And so there's a little bit of more evenness to what a student might experience across different schools. But we let those school communities decide that for themselves, where they'd like to be. We just consolidate the training so it looks similar. And then we're not disparate in the distribution of our professional development dollars and having different experiences going on, different dollars, and we're spending things, double them out for the same thing. So that's one way to kind of tighten down some of what the programming looks like in the professional development. I thought it was an interesting hypothetical from the teacher.
I kind of hear you saying, you know, it's gonna work itself out with the professionalism of the teachers and the principals. I mean, it'll, it's gonna take a year, but it'll just work itself out and we'll know, they'll all, they'll each know where they're headed and it's a feel, you get a feel for what you're gonna be doing, I guess.
I think what tonight does for us more than anything, it solidifies that our leadership team is committed to maintaining the magnet programs and those resources and opportunities for kids as part of a variety of options for folks, that we're doing it balancing the resources allocated there against other needs. We recognize that the staff who are committed to these programs and want to work with them right now are in a state of flux and it leaves them in march knowing there's a march forward. It may not be wholly satisfying to everybody, but there's lots of different things that we're trying to do and lots of opportunities for kids. And I think this gives us a balanced approach to that in the context of what our elementary enrollment looks like. So it's a multi-pronged solution, maybe not the exact solution everybody wanted, but I think it's one that, I'll go back to long-term financial implications, is sustainable against that model.
I for one appreciate what you and the team have done, thank you.
Anything you want to say?
Go ahead.
Several things came to mind. In some ways, this is kind of like Back to the Future because we're not sunsetting anymore, there's no sunset coming here. And we're also going back to some of the things that were actually designed for the magnets when they were created that the district got away from over time. The professional development piece, it's a little different way of looking at it, but the idea of connecting the very different program delivery that occurs in the magnet schools to what's going on in the other buildings, that's always important and we need to keep that in mind. And even what you're talking about with the one magnet class per grade level, St. Emerson in particular, I'm thinking of Emerson about this as I'm thinking Back to the Future. When we began the magnets, that's what we had. And we went with one classroom per grade level and one classroom at the gifted level, you know, three, four, five, and then we had pullout programs. So there is some Back to the Future here. And I'm good with that, I like it because what you're telling me here, you know, there are three primary categories that I'm looking at here. One is protecting the investment within the district. And that is investment not only in the non-quantitative pieces, the educational program, the development of teachers, the development of staff, the connections of family, the connection to community. We are protecting those investment pieces. We're also protecting the significant investment that this community has made in those buildings. We have buildings that are really old and they are the envy of a lot of other districts that let their buildings go. And our community chose not to do that. Those are significant pieces of the history of this community. And we're saying that is to be celebrated and continued. So the investment dollar-wise and non-quantitative measures, I like that. The history piece, I like that. I think it's important that we pay attention to our heritage and that heritage is both as a community and as an educational program. I also think that it makes sense educationally. And obviously, that is predominant in what we're talking about here. This is an educational program, as we know, the programs in these buildings have done incredible things, not just for the students who've been part of those programs, but as education is shaped, not just here, but as other districts have shaped their education as well. And for us to dismiss that would have been folly. So we're looking educationally at what makes sense, historically at what makes sense, and investment-wise as what makes sense. You're right, it's not, it's not perfect. It is not perfect, but I much prefer a sunrise to a sunset.
Just a couple, a couple of things. I first want to say to you, I talked with Dr. Kellogg about this on the phone today. I was told by a friend that I was disrespectful to you at the last meeting and the way I challenged this whole idea. So, and I apologize to you on the phone, I apologize offended anybody. I speak with, I speak with passion about things that matter to me and I hope I bring light, not so much heat. Sometimes it's a little hot as well.
Scientists in me tells me they always come together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to, I go back to my comments to Scott Reeves in the secondary. I am very passionate about trying to create lenses, streams, pathways, opportunities, as many as we can financially wisely. Because when you have fifteen thousand kids, you want to help awaken each child's little spark of education. And so I really don't, this is not disrespectful, I really don't like kind of where we're landing here. Why? Why? That's a really legitimate question. Because, gosh, Rick, a couple of weeks ago, we were riding into the sunset, right? It has always been my priority to try and focus on the entire district and what would be best for the district. And I think these pathways, secondary, are good for the whole district, although there are gonna be certain streams in certain schools. And I think when you focus on magnets or whatever we want to call them, schools of choice, sometimes you are told, well, you're just focusing on a narrow stream over there. And I just tend to think we are all in this rapid river together. It's always been my goals, my priorities, let's try to maintain things that are working really well. And these schools have worked really well to keep programs intact, to keep teachers together who have formed community collaborative teaching. That's why I say the going down to one class, one class, one class concerns me a little bit because of the collaborative nature of, at least what I've discovered across the district, man, I see a lot more collaborative teaching than I thought was out there. That's, that's just my observation. And I know I'm not saying anything to you, I'm not saying anything to you that you don't agree with. Provide everything you can, I get that. That's just where I get caught and the arrow that Scott had on the slide, remember the arrow that you had? Innovation generation and like starting, I really think you can extend that arrow back down to K if we ever do the all-day K thing. And on up through because I see across this district, elementary teachers doing stuff with kids that's just, that is just stunning to me. Kids that don't speak English, with kids that come hungry, with kids. So you get here that I'm just like speaking, I mean, I know you get that. My concern is, I am extremely, there really is something here, I'm not just like going off the deep end. My, my, my concern here is, John, Dr. Kellogg, I know the same as yours. And, and we always, always keep in mind the whole financial piece and don't want to go back any sooner. And I'm surprised you used the L word earlier, I'm just shocked, you know, we don't say that word. But it's, but it's a real, it's a real, the financial piece has to be looked at. And I get that. The one piece that I would ask you to look at is the two pieces I would ask you to look at. It's kind of one A and B, you'll get what I'm saying. This, yeah, the Monday, March ten superintendent reports the, the team that you're gonna organize. I'm preaching to the choir, I get that. Please make sure that that includes the people in the programs now. And again, I know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, I get that, totally get that. And the second piece, the second thing I'd ask is, maybe bring them into the conversation of, of, we think we need two in each grade. Work with them on helping them either see, either see, what I think you're saying is, it is not possible. And let me explain to you why. Or, and let them, as you let us, I mean, you were really good about letting us push back last meeting. And I, you know, I think, I think you're a guy that's, you let us push back and you'll push back and that's fine. That's why there's this diversity here. I would love to jump up and down and say, the magnets are surviving, yay, and the buildings, yay. And I'm not, you know, I, I don't play one note. I'm not all about one instrument. I am passionate about this whole district. And so in that, in that process, try to work with, try to figure out, try to, try to, try to just drill down with them why you are pretty convinced that we can't, I'll use Dr. Nestor Baker's example of Emerson, why we can't maintain the two and then add one and then add another one, build it up from two, two, two instead of watering it down. It's not your words, not my word either, but you understand, one, one, one. I hope any of that made sense, I hope you understand it's not disrespectful. It is really passionate about what I've seen come out of those people and those parents and those students. And when we vote, I will jump on board.
Let me summarize what I heard.
Well, good luck doing that, let me hear that.
One was involved, the teachers that are there. Two was not one, two, and to push back on that. So the one, no brainer.
Sure.
The two, I'm gonna respectfully tell you, Mr. Valardo, that if you're gonna ask me to be responsible for the management of the resources that the community's given us and to lead the board in a direction that I think in my expertise and the expertise of my staff makes sense, I think that second request is gonna push us and set expectations that aren't gonna be easy to meet. So if we're gonna go down that path, and let's be honest with each other, that is a more expensive path and will certainly have an impact on the financial situation moving forward. So if you're asking me to open the door for that consideration and look at the question, I will. But I'll tell you that unless I see something much more creative, I'm not gonna support it because we don't have the resource to do that. It'll put us, it'll put us in an awkward situation long-term. And I go back to that FY seventeen number and where we're gonna be. So let me put the FY seventeen number in a different context. Between now and FY seventeen, our revenues increased the FY17 number in a different context. Between now and FY17, our revenues increased $4 million. Our expenditures increased $22 million. So there's your gap in FY17, leading into an emergency levy campaign. So in our five-year forecast, we have $450,000 a year for additional staff. We keep calling that 10, but that's 10 people at $45,000 a year. That's not really 10 people. So what you're asking me to do, and what you're continuing to press on me to do, Mr. Velardo, I'm going to tell you from my perspective, and I will, I will gracefully and with full intent, open the conversation. But I think you're asking me to open a door that, that I think is going to, could hijack, make the process even harder to get to the solution we're trying to get to. If we want to return to that long-term as we get further down the path, and consider whether or not broadening the resources to those programs is viable, and the context, everything else, I would recommend we wait and move forward with the proposal I'm bringing forward. The last thing I'm going to say is you mentioned a vote. And just as a reminder, we're in a work session, there is no resolution. I'm operating under a board resolution from 12 about reimagining magnets and, and the notion of how to bring this forward. So at this time, there isn't a vote for the board. This is a work session conversation, so I have direction moving forward. What I hear from you is, please involve that staff. Please consider, open the door to staffing two. And I don't know if you want that immediate for next year. My suggestion would be, if we want to look at two, I think you hold that at bay until we get further down the road and see where we're going with this whole thing, and eat up, and, and take us in a direction that in the long-term we can sustain. So I'm willing to do that, but I'm probably not going to, I'm willing to do that, but I'm not sure I'm going to be able to satisfy that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm suggesting to you that you go to these organizational team development meetings and say, okay, this is how we could do two. I think what I'm asking you to do is when you meet with these folks, because I'm still getting people, Dr. Kellogg, that are saying, we do not understand the numbers of why we can't have two. And so the numbers are not as clear to me, and I would suggest they're probably not as clear to everyone. Whether they are accurate or not, I'm not questioning that.
You can have two, but it's at a cost.
And, and that's what I'm asking you to explain to these teams when they say, well, instead of adding one here, why don't we maintain these two here? And then in the following year, add one.
That's additional staff. I go back to, and you're going to have to maintain that staff at two sections per grade level into, into whatever long-term area there is. And that's going to continue every year to be part of that five-year forecast and continue down the cycle.
Right.
So I think in some people's minds, and maybe this is where you're getting to, is the notion that if the kids are coming out of their elementary schools and coming over the magnets, that in itself should free up staff. And it doesn't work that way, because the kids are coming from multiple grade levels at multiple schools. And so when you try and look at sections that might collapse and free staff up, it doesn't work. It's not a one-to-one game. Because there's, there's not, it's not going to collapse sections at the elementaries at a rate enough or enough number to fill these. Remember, at the backside of this, you have elementary schools, many of which overcrowded, and many of which have overflow numbers, because grade levels are already crowded. So you're looking at most of the elementary schools where a third grade, a third grade in a, in a building has 85 kids in three sections. If I pull a teacher out, I can't do that, because the sections are too large, right? Even if you lose five or six kids to the magnet. So it, it doesn't break evenly. Now, what we do have the opportunity to see, as I suggested down the future, is if we see that the magnet enrollment causes opportunity to collapse sections and, and have staffing available because of that, then I think it's our responsibility to come back and take a look at that staffing and the needs we have, and where the magnets and additional staffing line up against other staffing needs within the district. That's why I'm recommending a slow boat to this, one at a time. I think you can do it. It won't be, it would not be my best recommendation, but.
Well, and, and since it's not a vote, I'm not sure I can do it.
Well, if, if you're asking, how do I show the numbers, I'm telling you, I've been down to that far into the weeds with looking at the elementary numbers, and I can certainly show that. I did that with a team, I met with a smaller team just to run the spot and did exactly that. We put the elementary enrollment up for every building for this year, total number of students, total number of sections by grade level, total enrollment in buildings. And we went through the exercise of saying, where are there places where the number of kids and the number of staff are such that we're in that cusp that if we pull the teacher out, the class size is still being there, might be reasonable. And if a couple of those kids happen to be magnet school kids, it definitely would be reasonable. And there's just not much room in there. There's not much room in the elementary staffing. We have to remember, we cut staff, period. We're pretty, pretty cut to the bone. So there's not a lot of wiggle room within that to move them to magnets to fill in. And I think that's what some people's assumption is, you're going to backfill with the staff. Numbers don't work that easily.
And I think, I think that's what you just described, what you just did with the group. I think that's the kind of thing that needs to be communicated.
And so what I'm suggesting is, let's let the kids move first, staff what we know works, let the dust settle, and see what that does across the system. Because if it does create opportunities, because kids left and we have a grade level where we can collapse, then rather than automatically kicking that over to give two sections to the magnet, because I can't guarantee you're always going to have that, we take a look at the whole big picture of FTE in the district and what the other needs are, to make sure we're fulfilling all those needs and not, not that. So what you end up with is a magnet program of 300, I think of the numbers right, 15 sections, 25 kids, was that 375? End up about 375 magnet school kids with the one section number. And that's enough to help us bring enough kids out of the elementaries if we, if they're distributed right.
To deal with the overcrowding kind of thing that you're talking about before.
Yes, put us back in that 90 to 95 percent. So I hear what you're saying, and I'll be happy to show them the, the way I've looked at it.
That's just helpful, I think.
I can do that.
And I, and I think the, I, I don't want you to misunderstand my interest in this two, two, two thing, or whatever it is. I get that sometimes when you are bringing something back, or when you're trying to resurrect something, let me use one of my words, you, I think Scott is right. I, I, we were talking about before, Tracy said, Scott knows how, how soon you were going to unroll this. Did you tell us? And, and no, he didn't. And that's for obvious reasons. And I get that that kind of thing needs to be unrolled slowly. And I get that this thing might need to be resurrected, reconstituted, reawakened slowly, to see needs, to see enrollments, all of that. I tried to make very clear here that, that if this is still in process, in play, programs, streams, strands, that's awesome. I just want to make sure we are doing, and I, and again, preaching to the choir, the very best we can do. And when we come up against the numbers, financial or enrollment, then we explain why. Here is the enrollment, here are the numbers, and this is where we see the projection, and this is why we are moving forward. Because it doesn't sound like it's really a board prerogative to say no or yes. It's a work session report, this is the direction I'd like to go. Unless you push back hard, like we did last time, then you came with a new proposal, or a new plan, proposal, right?
A concept.
Concept, for the innovation generation in the elementary school.
51-year-old innovation generation guy.
Right.
Well, and to that point, the point of the work session is, as a team, where do we want to be? In last time, what I left with was, I don't think what, what I'm proposing, our team is proposing, is going to, going to satisfy our governance team. So back to that model, what I'm looking for is the sense that we're more confident with this. I hear what you're saying, where you'd like to be, you kind of know where I'm at with it. What I'd like to do is give the community and the teachers and the kids in the system solid decision point about what they will definitely see. What I take away from your, you're telling, what you're asking of me is, keep your eye on the horizon, and what other opportunities might there be for further growth within this as the system continues to move on. And that's, that's always the case. What I don't want to do is set an expectation when we walk out here.
Yes, no.
The expectation that John's going to look, Dr. Kellogg, I'll get formal for myself, is going to look at seeing if we can have two next year.
Yeah.
And what I'm saying is, I think we'll go with what we got, see how the dust settles, regroup, we'll have another year, see where we're at. And if we can live with that, then I think we've got a game plan and.
Yeah, and Reverend Velardo is good with that plan that you are suggesting. I just, I just like to stretch the rubber band as far as it can, and then if it needs to come back to ease the tension a little bit, we do that. But I, I love March 10, this whole thing here. Those, those administrators, those teachers, staff, they know what they're passionate about. And if I know anything about you and some of the team here at Eastwind, I think you want to release them into their passion. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, John, Dr. Kellogg, what you've heard, I think you've heard significant support across the board. Cindy, are you good? Cindy is good with where we're headed. Tracy?
Can I?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So I have one more quick thing that I really want to say to my friend, Rick. I can call you that, right, Rick?
Reverend Velardo.
All right, Rick. So for the first time in a long time, I feel hope. And so I want to share some of my hope that I feel. I was thinking of some things. We are not talking about ending a program or sunsetting it. We're talking about adding and building. I think this brings hope to our kids and our, our community, that I had mentioned being a beacon, and this helps us become a beacon. So we're not just saying we can have all-day kindergarten and gifted school. We're saying we can have magnets also. It's going to be smaller. We can build. I mean, I, I believe in that. And apart with the collaborating, and I, I do think that's so important, over at Hanby, I know the math program and the arts program, they already collaborate. So there's that going on. So that's a positive, the two grades. And it happens at Emerson, too, with the gifted program. So we're still going to have that. It's just going to look different. That's my two cents.
Thank you, my friend, Tracy.
So I think you've heard from all of us, and clearly, there is significant support on the board for avoiding that sunset. And there is significant support on the board for maintaining the magnet programs, as, as you have known for quite some time now. So tomorrow is the 11th, and you know what you got to do.
Is that the Ides of March?
No, it's the 15th. Still have a few days. But this, this is very important. The entirety of this work session discussion is very important. All of those staffing decisions, all of the staffing discussion take place within the context of the needs that Scott was talking about, as well as the needs that you were talking about as well. So we're looking at the elementary, and we're looking at the secondary program, and what those staffing positions need to be, and what, what give we have, what limited give we have around staffing. So all of those components go into play in that. And what you have brought forward is very commendable, because what you have done is taken what came out of strategic planning, what people say they want for their kids, what people say they want for this community. You've taken a look at the K-12 program, and you did not come back and restrict it further bureaucratically. What you have done is come back with options that are broadening, and that have the potential to broaden yet further, depending on where we are financially. So I think that is, is highly commendable. Thank you.
I got smart people working with me that helps. And I appreciate the, the nature of the conversation. Again, I appreciate everybody's patience as we've walked through this. It's not been easy. I know a lot of people have been anxious to find out where we're at. I hope that what we see tonight coming out, as you said, was a direction that people can be clear with. I believe I'm at Emerson tomorrow morning at 8:00, am I not?
Yes, you are.
So if I come out of there alive, I think I'll be okay. I probably did all right. So I should probably show up with donuts.
That might be a good idea.
Those pencils are allowed in the room.
With sharp objects. So thank you again for your patience and, and the time this evening. And, you know, I'll go back, remember the start of this whole, we talked about some other pieces that are on the table and discussions, transportation. I really want to encourage you to take that opportunity, because I may, I may get this wrong, but I don't think I am. After payroll, I think your next highest cost to your budget is transportation. And when you talk about access to things and opportunities for families and values, I think there's one there we really got to take a look at moving forward for our kids. So thanks for your time this evening, and I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. And now we'll go back to our formal Roberts Rules of Order, which is always a joy. Number eight on the agenda this evening would be our financial reports and actions. There are none listed tonight. We already took care of the personnel consent calendar, as you'll recall. We moved to item 10, which is policy consent. There is nothing listed for policy consent this evening. So we'll continue our march through the agenda. Then we move to old business, which is recommended action, and we have none. So we will continue moving to item 12, which is recommended action for new business, and we have none. And we will get to the point where we're acting on something, I promise. Number 13 on the agenda, the recommended action standing business for this evening. There are two items under number 13 for the agenda tonight. The first would be the donations for the evening. Could I have a motion on donations, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, that worked really well.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, is there anything anyone would like to say about the donations this evening?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Very much.
Awesome.
It's always, you know, it's one of the best things about the agenda. When the agenda goes live and I get to look and see those donations, it's so cool to see how many people support this district in so many different ways. Obviously, donations are monetary, but then you begin always to think about all of the components that this community feeds into this district to sustain the strength of this district. It's really amazing stuff. Would you like to call the roll?
Mrs. Crowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes, the donations for this evening have been approved. Moving on to item 13.02, this is the resolution to approve the 2014 summer school program, the summer learning opportunities. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. With a motion, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second. Who would like to talk about summer school learning opportunities?
I think that one's me.
I think so.
That was the sidebar. So in front of you is the summer school program brochure. This includes original credit, repeat credit courses, our PE program that we run in the summer school, as well as OGT intervention. So the dates, times, tuition costs are in there for those programs. This is, this is what I traditionally call the secondary summer school program, not the intervention piece that we have for elementary and middle grades, that will come later. So by approving this evening, you're approving the dates, the timeframes, and the tuition costs. The tuition costs are structured so that we can mitigate the cost of the program to the general fund against the tuition. So we're always trying to make sure that the tuition rate helps us fund the program and, and not, not pull from general fund. So as we're working backwards from here, we have staffing and all the pieces that come around it to keep the budget neutral around some, this particular part of the summer school program. So what you're approving this evening are the courses, the costs, the dates.
For summer school, not the intervention, yes.
Correct.
Comments or questions?
Want to say something?
Okay. Hearing none.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. Item 13.02, the resolution to approve 2014 summer school program, summer learning opportunities, has been approved. Moving on in the agenda to the second portion of public comment for the evening, our final portion of public comment on our agendas is for comments for the good of the order. In other words, it doesn't have to be restricted to agenda items. It's for the good of the district. And people who choose to speak at this portion of public comment, just as our other portion, are limited to five minutes. However, that being said, we have no one signed up for this portion of public comment this evening. So we'll move on to board comments, and we always have something to say. Who wants to say something this evening?
I don't have anything.
You don't want to say anything else?
Oh, no, I'm going to.
Oh, okay, all right. I figured.
I'm going to pass.
Okay.
I want to remind everyone that the Summer Camp Expo will be held Wednesday, March 12th. That's the day after tomorrow, at North, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. It's free. It's a fantastic program put on by parent council. And I wanted to say thank you to our Treasurers Department. I know Bart's not here tonight, but they won an award for excellence in financial reporting. So thank you very much.
You've done it before. Rick?
I'm the legislative liaison, which means I get to try and follow the state legislature and what they do with education. It's like awesome. I mean, I, it's really, because I pay attention to this. Anyway, and I tease, I really, I wanted to try and do this. Anyway, and I tease, I really, I, I wanted to try and do this. Just a, maybe a bit of an announcement, kinda, maybe just update for you all. ODE, you know, put out a notice recently that they were, you know, the calamity days and so extending kinda the testing window, the spring testing window for three to eight OAA. And this was intent to allow districts opportunity, build in more time of instruction and so forth, based on, because of some number of calamity days and so on. We are working on, we're working on some changes to schedule and calendar to, to try and accommodate some of that. Nothing's been like written in stone yet, but I know that administration board will communicate all of that to you. And it's, it's just like a big, a, a, a big topic out there, it's calamity days, are we getting more, are we staying through the summer, going every day, which would be my vote for my children? But that's, uh, that's something I don't have a vote on either, isn't it? My kids to stay in school through the summer. I wanna again, uh, thank Dr. Kellogg for allowing me to just, uh, to push and to nudge, and for him to have, uh, the, the, the integrity to push and to nudge back on this whole program. I, I, I value that kind of give and take, and hope, I hope, hope that I do that respectfully. The only other piece I will add out there is that we continue to try the, the five, the gang of five up here, board members, just, we continue to try and be faithful with what we do, intentional and prayerful. Don't worry about the church-state thing. Uh, just know that we try to look at, um, the kids, the teachers, and the staff as people worthy of our best efforts. And I believe that people here at East Wind are trying to do the same thing. So we will argue our way through, we'll fuss our way through, and then we will continue to have one of the best school districts in the state of Ohio, I believe.
Hopefully, those of you who are here tonight, and people who may choose to tune in later, will realize that this was a very significant meeting. This meeting tonight laid out future directions in no uncertain terms, and really shows that we are moving forward. And there are some really exciting options coming for our children, and those options are going to infuse the entirety of the education program. Also, if, if you picked up on what John, what Dr. Kellogg had to say, he mentioned one sentence that I think is worth going back to. He was talking about how a number of burdens have been placed on families, cost burdens have been placed on families, as we have tried to work our way through this very, very difficult timeframe. And what we're talking about is, as we go forward, how do we help with that burden? What can we do so that those burdens are eased? Because families shouldn't be bearing some of the burdens that they have been asked to bear. So it's important to keep in mind that as we move forward, as we figure out, as, as we lay out pathways and fuss about them and determine them and move ahead, that's in our head, too. And that's what we will be thinking about and talking about in the future. That's important. So as we're looking at increasing our options and opening all these new connections, there are nuts and bolts that go with that. And we'll be looking at a couple of policy issues as we move forward, and since I'm the policy liaison, I get to talk about that, which is always fun to me, I like it. We are going to be working with a group of individuals that the superintendent's gonna pull together to look at the volunteer policy. The volunteer policy was revised recently, and there have been questions and concerns raised about the interpretation of that policy and how that's to be implemented. So in order to develop some specific administrative guidelines around that, so that the people in the schools, the educators, the families, the kids, so that everybody understands what the heck is going on, and so that everybody knows where to turn for those guidelines and that interpretation, a group will be meeting to put that pen to paper or cursor to screen. And we will also be looking at our policy guidelines, as the superintendent mentioned, around the magnet schools, around, particularly around the lottery system, and making sure that those guidelines are clear. And we're also looking at our policies as regards the third grade reading guarantee. So as all of this motion forward continues, the nuts and bolts will continue as well, so that we create a strong foundation.
I'm happy to be here tonight.
And I am happy you're here tonight, too.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, Nancy. Please remember I am learning in my own virtue and shout out something during our meetings. It's wonderful to see everyone. Also, I beg thank you to everyone that attended your [inaudible]. We raised $1,000.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It's fine, it's great. I'm so glad this technology has come in, and, you know, we're learning to use it, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be great to have Cindy's voice here again, or... And she just got it. And, yeah, and she just got it. So this is clearly something that is just being gotten used to, it's exciting stuff.
And we are, and we are excited about that, having Cindy here and her voice and all, and Marla's is a problem right now, but the rest of us...
So with all this good stuff in mind, could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, would you like to call the roll, Laura?
Mrs. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Now she...
Yes.